All right, we have form, so I'm going to fill them in in order. First item of the business is pledge allegiance. Join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, we begin the really fun peachy part of our annual year on the Board of Ed, which is working on the budget. As you know, the budget's been under preparation by the superintendent, finance director, and their staffs for quite some time. It has been designed to fit the strategic operating plan that the Board has adopted and facilitate the implementation of that plan. The Finance Committee has had its meeting for a presentation review of the budget. This is the Board's workshop meeting. This is a meeting where we will not be taking any votes tonight. This is a workshop to get information. We can vote on the budget at our next meeting next week on January 17th. So, the work session will commence, and at this point, I'd ask Dr. Adam Haskins to start us off.
Sure. Well, let me just start by thanking Tom and Kristen for their great work on this. I think that, at this point, we know as much about the budget on a fluently detailed level than we could ever know, right? And I think that this certainly exceeds the level of understanding that the district has ever had of this budget. And it's really through that kind of grasp, I think, that we're able to make better decisions and more accurate decisions and have a good budget process. I sent you a budget message, hopefully you have read it, so I'm not going to read it to you tonight, but it is also in hard copy in your folder here, and it represents my best attempt to summarize where we are. Essentially, I think we are faced with a parallel track. On the one hand, we have an education budget that is comprised, as it should be, of our contractual commitments and items that relate directly to your strategic operating plan that are vital for the improvement of our schools, to raise the bar and close the gap. We're going to be reviewing those in some detail this evening. And that totals about 5%. And then we have this other anomaly. We have an 8.6 million increase in medical insurance claims that creates a significant financial challenge for the district. In fact, you know, if it is not solved through some structural solution, then we don't have a budget, and neither does the city. And as you know, I've met with Mayor Rilling on this. We are both extremely concerned, and we also agree that it is time for a different approach to this. And I've outlined in my budget message to you the three solutions or potential solutions that we intend to study. We each have appointed representatives to a joint committee for this purpose. Their work will start next week. And so I think the perspective of the Board in terms of what we are faced with is to work both on our education budget while we commit to a different structural solution for medical benefits. And I think that's the only way we will make progress as a school district. So, Tom is going to present an overview tonight. You have your budget booklets to follow. And I should just also mention that, you know, this is one half of the budget. The other half is in the form of the per-student allocations that are given to schools based upon their enrollment, and the school governance councils and principals in each school, during the month of February, will be working on their budgets and how to allocate them, and will be submitting them at the end of the month. Your responsibility on the 17th is to send a dollar amount to the City Council that projects what Tom is reviewing with you tonight. And we fully expect that during that process of the next several months with the city, that adjustments will be made in different directions. And again, anticipate that we will find the best solution we can to the health insurance crisis. So, with that as introduction, Tom, if you would review the budget, recommended budget with the Board.
Absolutely. Well, happy to be here again tonight. This does, you know, represent an important point for us as we turn the budget over to you and assist you in your evaluation on the budget. I want to start out by thanking Kristen Karshmit and also Nina Laria on our staff, our nighttime security guard in this building, Owen. He knows the budget staff very well because frequently our staff leaves the building at the same time he leaves the building. So, there's been a lot of time and effort and sweat and tears and blood that's gone into developing this budget and bringing the numbers before you. You know, I think one of the things we've talked about in the past is the issue of position control, and we have made tremendous progress in terms of bringing live the position control module within UNIS, which is our financial management system. So, really, we have much better control and understanding of where all of our dollars are going as they relate to staff, which has always been an area that the district has really struggled in. We still have, you know, some tweaks and improvements to make in the way we handle position control, but compared to where we were a year ago, it's really night and day. So, I will, you know, start again. The superintendent referred to the fact that really our budget consists of three broad components that are outlined here. The first component is really the base budget increase, which totals about $2.6 million or 1.5%. And that's the amount necessary to fund labor contracts and just normal cost escalation. So, that is kind of where we start on the budget. On top of that, we have included program improvements that total just under $4 billion, $3.98 billion or about 2.3%. And these are really strategic program improvements that directly align with the Board's adopted strategic operating plan. And these are improvements that are specifically designed to address the goals of the Board and to, again, raise the bar and close the gap, which is our overall objective of the strategic operating plan. So, those two items together total about a 3.8% increase. And then, we've introduced the concept of really a special or supplemental budget request for enrollment growth, because this is something that most school districts in Connecticut are not currently having to deal with and haven't had to deal with for a number of years. But in fact, enrollments have been growing consistently in Norwalk for eight or 10 years now at this point. And we are up hundreds and hundreds of students in the last eight years. That information is presented later in the budget presentation and is in the budget book. But we think it's important to acknowledge that as our student population increases, there needs to be an acknowledgement and a recognition that that has financial implications. Certainly, economic growth and development is a very important and strong indicator of the health of a community and the health of a school district. But there are some costs associated that come along with that growth and development. And so, we think it's important to recognize those costs and to understand them. So, we've identified here specifically $2.5 million or about 1.4% related to covering the cost of the enrollment growth that was experienced in the current fiscal year, as well as the enrollment growth that we project for next fiscal year based on our consultants' enrollment projections for school year 17, '18. I would also note that there has been enrollment growth generally, but that enrollment growth has been particularly large among English-language learners and also special needs students. And as we know, those are students for whom the average cost of education is actually higher than it would be for a typical student. And then, the final item, which is, was obviously discussed by the superintendent, there is really this unprecedented budget driver for next year, totaling $8.6 million or about 4.9% of the budget. And I will get into some detail on each of these items. In this case, the health insurance, increase in the health insurance appropriation is really driven by a combination of factors. One is underlying claim costs are increasing, are projected to increase, according to our health insurance consultant, at about 16%. But then, on top of that 16%, we have the impact of one-time reductions that were made, drawdowns from the insurance fund that were made last year as part of the plan and program to fund the Special Ed Development Fund, as well as drawdowns that were made in order to just simply reduce the amount of money that the district had to put into the operating budget next year for benefits. But those are really one-time utilizations of the insurance fund surplus that don't repeat next year. And so, that's why they have to be made up in the '17, '18 budget. And again, I'll talk about each one of these items in more detail as we go through the presentation.
So, as we go through this workshop session, I would encourage the Board to stop, Tom, at any point with questions, comments, things that you watch would support further, okay?
Oh, one thing I, I'm sorry, I forgot to do. I wanted to just kind of orient you to the budget book itself and just take a moment. So, I'm going to deviate from the slide projection and just say that there's five tabs. The first tab is the introduction section, which includes the message from the superintendent, summary of the budget, a review of our vision and current goals, some information on enrollment, a comparison of the current year budget with the proposed budget for '17, '18, as well as a graph of how those budget dollars are allocated. The second tab, or I should say, the third tab is the, no, I'm sorry. The second tab is the all-funds budget. This is new. This is not something that we've presented to you in the past. But the intention of providing you the all-funds budget is to provide you with information on particularly grant funds that we receive. And we do receive a substantial amount of money through various grants, federal grants and state grants. We also receive some money from programs, from fees and charges for after-school programs and before-school programs or pre-k programs. And we also receive money from, or we also have a budget related to food service. So, the all-funds budget gives you a look at the expenses in all of those areas. And again, that's new, and it's part of really an effort to try to be transparent so that when people ask, "Well, what is the total amount of money that's available to the Board of Education?" That's the intent of providing the all-funds budget. I've been doing it for five years, thank you.
I see how the Alliance Grant pegged at 1.2 million. Is that reflective of the recent cut from the state that what you might expect?
No, it isn't, because up until actually yesterday, we had understood that the ECS cut was going to be taken from the ECS grant that goes to the municipality and is used as a general fund revenue. And that is, in fact, how it's being handled in all the districts except for the Alliance districts. So, I believe there's 30 Alliance districts, four are one of them. And so, we were under the mistaken impression, based on some information that had been put out by the State OPM, that because they had said it was going to be taken on a given date from a payment that's made at the end of February and end of April, and those are the payments that go to the city. The Alliance district money, we draw down based on submissions that we submit. So, in any event, bottom line is it's going to come, the $250,000 is going to come from the Alliance district grant. So, that will be something that we're going to have to deal with. And as I think as the superintendent indicated, as we go through this budget process, not just between now and next Tuesday, but really between now and when you approve a final reconciled budget in June, there are going to be a number of changes. And one of those areas that there likely will be some things in is with respect to state grants, because there's a lot of uncertainty out there with respect to state grants. And in fact, it may be that by June 30th or June 15th or whenever you adopt the final reconciled budget, we may still not know what we're going to receive in state grants, depending on how long it takes, you know, for the legislature to, you know, conclude that.
So, the first information the state put out was, it was very clear. It was coming out of the ECS grant. And Monday, they notified us that, consistent with their position in the CGEN case, they were considering the Alliance grant as an extension of the ECS grant. And so, for the Alliance districts, it would come out of the Alliance district grant so as to protect distressed cities in the state financially. So, that's where we are. This is a concern. All of our CSIDs are funded through the Alliance grant. So, as a result of this cut, we don't have funding for two of them. We will cover that from the Priority School District grant. Basically, we're covering it from the carryover of the Priority School District grant this year. But for next year, it will, this is a problem that will have to be solved as well.
So, the other tabs after the all-funds tab is the budget summary by object tab, and that's similar to what you've seen in the past, which summarizes the actuals from last year, approved current year, and requested budget for next year by object code. And then, we have the budget by location, which is really where we begin the student-based budget portion of this budget. And as the superintendent alluded to, you'll see, as you did last year, at this stage, to be determined in many of the columns with respect to the school budgets, because the school budgets are subject to adoption by the School Governance Council and so forth. So, what we've provided you at this point is the total amount of money provided by level under the recommended budget for the high schools, the total amount of money recommended for the middle schools, and the total amount of money recommended for the elementary schools. And then, when you get to, starting at Department 50, which is after you've gone past all the schools, starting at Department 50 through Department 61, you will see the, these are the central service departments. There, you'll see the actual recommended numbers by line item for each of those departments. And the final tab is a revenue tab, just on the revenue that goes to the city's general fund as part of the operating budget. So, that shows you the total ECS grant that we anticipate would be going to the city. And again, that is subject to action by the legislature and therefore, obviously, could change. So, in terms of the budget goals, and you'll remember these from the December meeting. The superintendent outlined the budget goals that he felt should be incorporated into the budget for '17, '18, and these are goals that are consistent with, and in fact, referred to in the strategic operating plan. The first goal that's incorporated here is to provide program support for the intra-district magnet schools. And that's been an area that we've identified has really been a deficiency, if you will, for the district, because we have magnet programs that are simply not as robust and don't provide the additional kinds of services that a true magnet program really requires. And so, we have proposed a funding level of $1,000 per student. I'll go into some of the details of how that number is calculated to roll up to the total budget request. But I would note that at the $1,000 level, by comparison, the state of Connecticut, the intra-district magnet programs, the state currently provides a $3,000 per student allocation for those magnet programs. So, at $1,000, we're really only at a third of what the state deems to be the program costs that might be associated with a magnet program. But we think it's enough money, and it's significant enough money, to make some substantive headway in terms of making the magnet programs more robust here in Norwalk. The second budget goal is to increase the high school per pupil allocation to at least equal the middle school per pupil allocation. So, if you go to the, and you don't need to do it now, but if you look at the budget by location, and you look at the summary for the high school, and you look at the summary for the middle school, you'll see that those per-student allocations now match each other. And we think that's important to do for a variety of reasons, but most importantly, because of the study hall situation that the Board is well aware of at the high schools, that we have students who are essentially being placed into study halls, in some cases, more than one study hall, because there are simply not, there's not enough staff to provide the course offerings necessary to put those students into courses. And we think that's a situation that simply calls out to be addressed. And so, this budget does that. This budget addresses that issue. Now, it may not completely eliminate the, you know, study halls. In fact, it probably won't completely eliminate the study halls, but it will make a significant dent in them. And so, we think it's important to bring that high school allocation up to the middle school allocation. And you'll remember from our previous discussions that Norwalk really is an outlier. It's unusual to have high school per pupil expenditures actually be lower than middle school per pupil expenditures, simply because operating a high school is more expensive. You've got all the ancillary programs, athletics, all of the other things, all the electives and course offerings that go along with running a comprehensive high school is simply more expensive generally than running a middle school. So, this budget makes substantial progress in addressing that issue.
Tom took a quick question. So, what happened with that? Why is there such a difference? Did we overlook that last year?
No, there has always been, it's always been this way. What the change is that makes it more noticeable, I think, to families and students and everyone else, is that we went to a blocked schedule. Both high schools went to a blocked schedule. So, now, a study hall that was 45 minutes is 90 minutes. And, you know, particularly if you have more than one, this is not, it's not a good situation. But it's a long-term historic issue. It also is key to another fundamental structural issue in our high schools, and that's the 20-credit graduation requirement. Now, the best high schools in our state throughout the nation today have a 26-credit graduation requirement. Take 25 courses plus a credit for your capstone. This is very much along the lines of the state-recommended high school redesign requirements. So, we need to get to a 26-credit graduation requirement. We can't do it with the number of staff we have at the high school because we can't offer enough credits. And we need to have a high school that does not have study halls. So, you know, this is like so many issues that we face, right? This can't be solved overnight, but we have to make progress toward it. So, by at least, I mean, it is such an anomaly that no one who I mentioned this to couldn't believe that we spend more money on middle schools than we do on high schools. Nobody can envision how a high school could operate that way. But nonetheless, our goal this year is to get it even. And you'll see, it's a significant amount of money to get it even. It's over $1 million. The next year, we probably need to do the same thing, right? And so, we will have to get to a point, long-term, where, similar to other districts in our state and nation, we're spending more money per student at the high school level than we are middle or elementary. So, this is an installment in that longer-term goal. But I think this will address the worst of it. So, I don't think any student will have two study halls next year. And a lot of students won't have, won't have any. And, you know, our high school leaders, Scurches in the audience tonight, they've done very creative things, like for the seniors, they've scheduled these at the beginning or end of the day so a student can actually come in later or go home earlier. But, you know, there's a limit to that. And this also has a direct effect on our SAT scores. As you know, we're being measured by the Universal SAT. Every student is taking it now. Our SAT scores are not good. The SAT is a very different test than our standards-based tests at the elementary school. Unlike the standards-based test, you can't analyze it and focus on the areas where you're low because the SAT is a general achievement test. And the way you do well on it is through breadth and depth of program. You simply take more courses, and you take courses at a higher level to do well on the SAT. So, this has all kinds of implications for us. But it's a standard that every good school system needs to meet, and I'm pleased we can, we can make progress toward it.
I will tell you already, I mean, I know plenty of kids this year in the first half of the year, they did have two study halls. They were down at 10:30 in the morning. Yeah, 10:30 in the morning, down to school. Crazy. And I know what I had three last year.
Really?
Yeah. So, obviously, it's an issue. The Board's aware of it, and this budget does make some serious progress in terms of addressing that issue. Items three and four are really related, and this is a continuation, if you will, of the effort from last year's budget to move items that were, that are really core, basic expenses. Last year, remember, it was the, we had 20% of our K-3 teachers were being funded from the Priority School District grant. We were also funding essentially the entire Norwalk Pathways Academy operation through the Priority School District grant and various other things that we don't believe really belong funded out of those grants. And particularly in an era now that we're coming into with uncertainty over what state funding may look like in those grants, it's important that we not be funding core services that couldn't possibly be touched. The intention of those grants is to fund supplemental services so that we can address our achievement gap, that we can provide the Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions that the Board has talked about. So, one of the items that we have been funding from the Priority School District grant was the security guards at the high schools. And there's really no justification for doing that. And so, this budget moves the cost of those security guards out of the Priority School District grant and back into the local budget. And I said it was related to item four because the plan is to then use the funds that are freed up from that move in the Priority School District grant to fund expanded summer learning opportunities at grades 3 and 4 and also at grade 12 for students who need an extra credit or two in order to meet graduation requirements. So, again, we think that's an important shift to make here. It's one that we've talked about before, and it's one that we need to do both for compliance purposes with how we're using those state grants and also for educational purposes so that we're using those grants to leverage them to move student achievement. And finally, which I think I already mentioned, this budget incorporates a supplemental appropriation for enrollment growth, which we think, again, is important for the community to recognize that as our student population grows, there are budget implications, and that that needs to be factored into the budget that we submit.
So, no questions? Sorry. Yes, please. This appropriation for the enrollment growth that you're talking about?
Yep.
I'm on the second to last page, I think it says, so we're going to have 62 extra students for next year. And we're going to give $2.5 million, $40,322 per student. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, let me explain that. We, we had a real- We, we had a related catch-up. We had an additional 90 students this year. Okay. So this is our, our actual enrollment measured between October 1 and October 1, which is the official state enrollment. That went up by 90. Now, you may recall, when we were having all these budget discussions with the city last year, there was a suggestion from Robert Behring that we could cut the district by another 300,000 or so in things like the fuel costs and so on. And I said, "We don't want to do that because we're growing, and we have no way to deal with the additional classrooms that we're going to need." So in fact, we put on four additional, we had to put on four additional classrooms last year due to enrollment growth. And those, that funding source is now gone. It was a one-time funding source of something like fuel costs, which have now been, money's been used, adjusted down to the other level. Where we did not do well in terms of covering is the increased number of English-language workers, which is up significantly. Compounding that this year was the federal effort to relocate unaccompanied minors. And we have 15 unaccompanied minors. These are students who are at a very high level of need. They have not been to school in any country for a long time. In many cases, they have been traumatized through violence, either to them or to their family members, which is why they are here in the, in the first place. And we have a situation now where we are over-enrolled in both early arrivals classes at the high school. We need a bilingual social worker for the, the unaccompanied minors. I mean, we have a great deal of need there that no one at the state or federal level has addressed in the, in the effort to, to place these students. And then we have other structural things. You know, one of the, one of the reasons, it wasn't, it was not the only reason, but one of the reasons for creating Norwalk Early Childhood Center was to create, to relieve some enrollment pressure in the eight elementary schools where these classes were being housed. But now we have the operational costs of NECC, it's running another, another building. So what we are looking at is the 90 last year and the 60 that are projected, we're using our enrollment, McGroom enrollment projections for that, but the 90 is, is actual.
Right. So it was last year's actual, plus the projected increase of 62 for next year, multiplied by, actually, last year's per-pupil expenditure, total per-pupil expenditure from the state Department of Education website for Norwalk was $16,800. So that's how we arrived at the figure of the 2.5.
But at a basic level, we've got seven classrooms that are not covered without an enrollment appropriation growth. You know, what I, what I'd like to be able to say to the city is, "Look, this is something we would do only when we're growing. We're not going to do it when we're not growing, and if we are declining, we should, we should be able to decrease the, or at least net, have a net decrease for the number of students that, that we lost." We have this issue with the ECS also. The ECS has been flat-funded since the last year of the relative administration. So for the last 10 years, nine years, 10 years, everybody in the state has not had the enrollment adjustment for the ECS. Now, as you know, we don't do well fundamentally under the ECS formula to begin with, right? Because it's 80% property wealth and 20% income. We would want it 50% of each. However, many districts in the state have lost enrollment during that period of time, and have actually been benefited by the fact that the enrollment factor has not changed. It's been frozen. Meanwhile, our enrollment is, is going up, so we have a double whammy in terms of funding on the ECS. And then we have, you know, all these needs. So that's why it's here. And, and I, you know, I've struggled with how to deal with this, and again, I'm sure it can be dealt with in a variety of ways, but this is our best thinking about how to deal with it.
And you said that if the enrollment starts to decline, and increase, would you be giving the money back to the city?
When we give it back, we would net it out against whatever increase we're proposing. So let's say we, our contracts, let's say in a normal year, our contracts and our, our, you know, bus company, busing costs and everything went up by 2.5%. And let's say we lost, you know, 50 students from the previous year. Well, we would say, "Okay, we're only going to request 2% because we're going to net out the students that, that we lost." I think that's a, probably a good practice for us to follow regardless. But yeah, I don't, I don't think we could justify asking for it during a time of growth and not having some kind of an enrollment adjustment if we are going down again. Now, I say that realizing that our 10-year enrollment projections show us growing each of the next 10 years. So this may, this may be a theoretical proposition, but nonetheless, we, we need the help to, to deal with, with growth. This is, I think this is not just a matter of the city increasing the grant list or collecting permit fees that would be beneficial. There is a cost to growth that needs to be netted, netted out of that.
Any other questions, or I'll go on? The next slide is, is putting some numbers to the program improvements that I previously referred to. So here you see the $1,000 supplement for, per student for the intra-district magnet school programs, results in, I'm sorry, am I on the right page? I apologize. I'm one slide ahead. Okay, so. Am I good? Okay, so our budget category, so this is our current year budget, you see at the top, $176,150, bringing it down to $193,893, consisting of the three categories that I referred to, the base budget increase of 1.5% of $2.6 billion, the program improvements at just under $4 million or 2.3%, the special appropriation enrollment growth at $2.5 million, 1.4%, and then the, the health insurance increase. So next slide is the breakdown of the $3.9 million or just under $4 million program improvements. And so here is where you see the cost of the intra-district magnet school program at $1,000 per student totaling just over $1.2 million, and I'll break that down further in a moment. You see the increase in the high school per pupil expenditure to equal the middle school, just over $2 million. And again, I'll walk through that calculation in just a moment, just a moment. And then the last item is the transfer of the security guards out of the Priority School District. So that's how we get to our $3,978,000 figure of total program improvement costs. So again, kind of drilling down a little bit further, the magnet school supplement is broken down between the various schools that operate some kind of specialized magnet program. One of the things I'll note here, I already mentioned that the $1,000 number per pupil is only a third of the per-pupil allotment that the state of Connecticut has deemed is necessary for their intra-district magnet programs. But we've taken this a step further in order to try to keep the number down at what we think is a reasonable overall request. We have proposed, in some instances, sort of phasing the, the increases. So if you look at Silvermine, you'll see we've incorporated the students for grades K and 1, kindergarten and first grade. We have not incorporated a magnet supplement for 2nd through 5th grade because it was moved to a full dual-language program last year. So we only have two class, classes that are kindergarten or kindergarten and first grade are full dual-language. It's still a split dual-language program in grades 2 through 5. So we've only applied the magnet supplement, in this case, to the first two grades here. As we, as that cohort moves up, we would expect the magnet supplement to go up each year as well there. We've done something similar with respect to Jefferson. Jefferson has over 600 students in the school, and really, it's just simply a matter of the, trying to deal with a number that we think is reasonable overall for a first-year rollout of this program, that we incorporated a supplement for grades 4 and 5. But ultimately, our objective would be to incorporate a supplement for the entire, you know, for all grades at any magnet school program. Of course, the long-term plan there, as you know, part of the facilities plan is to build a STEM magnet over at Ponus and then return Jefferson to a neighborhood school, but it still is a magnet school program, or it's still a science magnet until the Ponus program can be brought up and running. Columbus, we've built in the magnet supplement for all grades based on K through 5 enrollment. And then you see there also NECA at Norwalk High School. We've allocated a magnet supplement for NECA for the Medical Academy at Bryan McMahon, and also for the IB program at Bryan McMahon. So those items together total the $1.2 million of magnet school supplement that is part of this requested budget. Yes?
For Jefferson, for upcoming budgets, what grade will be incorporated into these budgets? So for example, would next year be only grade 3, or would it be grades 2 and 3 along the 4th and 5th?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
So this is something we've struggled with, and I've had discussions with the principal about. Currently, the program at Jefferson is not robust at all. It's basically a field trip program. And it does focus more on grades 4 and 5 than the rest of the school. That's where the nature's classroom is, and several of the things that are done with the maritime aquarium. So we thought that that would be the place to start, 4th and 5th grade. I think that, you know, what we're really interested in is the new STEM school, right? Which would be robust, where every teacher is teaching experiential science. Currently at Jefferson, there's no more science teaching than there is in any other school, for that matter. And so we don't have the kind of cost at Jefferson currently in terms of the, of the program. And I think our greater concern, so what we may be recommending is maintaining this until the new building is built, and then funding the students in the new building all grades, you know, at the, at the $1,000 level, similar to what we're proposing for Columbus.
And then for Silvermine, will this continue to be a grant?
Yeah, that, on that one, you will advance with the, with the cohorts.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, just, what's the 157?
Um...
Under the grades column for total increment, program support to the left, 157?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, we were holding it in for 157 at a point in time, but then we allocated to the school.
Okay, we originally had it as a placeholder in Department 57, which is finance. We've since moved it out of finance.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you send this to your later secretary?
Oh, absolutely. We can, we can. Yeah, no, we can make copies of this. If you want a copy, that's not a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. And we will also post it to the website probably tomorrow, I suppose, as well for any members of the public or anyone else.
This is all in the budget book, by the way, but this is a summarized version, which we'll, we'll send you on track with tomorrow.
Actually, these pages don't have it.
All the information is in there.
No.
It was summarized.
The tables are not.
Correct. These are summaries of the information.
We, we were given hard copy of this two nights ago.
Right, it's changed slightly, but that was the finance.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't get it.
We'll get, we'll get to it.
I think it's in copy in the books, yeah, website.
Okay, then, then the next item we talked about, and this is really the details of how we arrived at the number for high school per pupil allocation. I had mentioned that was the just over $2 million adjustment making, that we're proposing and recommending in the 17, 18 budget. So in terms of how that was calculated, it was calculated starting with the middle school current per pupil allocation in '16, '17. So the top of the slide up here on the right-hand side, the $6,811 per pupil was the current per pupil allocation for middle school. We applied that figure. We did not roll up this figure to incorporate wage increases specifically in this calculation, but we took that figure. We did apply the 17, 18 middle school enrollment, projected middle school enrollment to then arrive at a projected middle school number of $17.47 million. There are, as, as you remember, with respect to student-based budgeting, we were, we're implementing student-based budgeting really in a three-phase process. So first phase was last year. Second phase, we are moving some additional items from what had been the central services, the central office budget into the school student-based budget for next year. So we are proposing to move guidance counselors to the student-based budget for next year, and we're proposing to move music teachers to the student-based budget for next year. So we made adjustments to that $17 million figure to then come up with a revised middle school expenditure level of $19,871,000 based on the projected middle school enrollment. That yields a per pupil allocation for the middle schools next year of $7,747. And then essentially, what we did was back into how much money we would have to add to, we took our normal high school budget, we rolled that up to account for wage increases and, and so forth. And then we looked at the new high school enrollments and said, "How much, what would be the high school student-based budget if we did nothing? And how much do we need to add to the high school enrollment to bring it up to the middle school level?" And so that's the calculation below. We needed to bring, needed to add $564 per pupil times 3,500 students at the high school level, so we needed to make an adjustment of $1,981,000 to the allocation for high schools. And then there is a small adjustment to middle schools, and that simply really is picking up the, the difference between the base budget and the increase in enrollment for middle schools. So the total adjustment then that we make to the student-based budgets to provide a student-based budget where we have a high school per pupil allocation that matches the middle school per pupil allocation, is this $2,45,000. I don't know if there's any questions on, on that.
Just a note for those of you who are interested in any of the details, the budget by location, page 38 and 46, you'll see the $7,747 in the rollup for high school.
Right.
So you can tie that back to that.
Okay, and then we move on to the third major category, budget category, and that is the enrollment growth, the special appropriation for enrollment growth. And that totals the $2,537 that we discussed earlier. What we've provided here are really the, some of the expenses that we've calculated and determined are in the budget, need to be in the budget in order to accommodate the enrollment growth that we have experienced over the last two years, with the enrollment growth for 2016 and the projected enrollment growth for October 1 of 2017. And so that includes additional ELL teachers, it includes class size aids, there's an impact on transportation. As student counts go up, there's an increase in, or an impact on the As student accounts go up, there's an increase in, or an impact on the number of teachers that we need as enrollment goes up. There's additional cost in special education, there's costs related to the early childhood programs, and then there's a variety of costs that relate to everything and everything else essentially in the central service budgets of the, of the district from technology, facilities, curriculum, and operations. And so, so again, that's the third leg of the request that we're making tonight.
Special ed condition, is that on top of what we already, was, you know, assigned to us?
That is, this is the additional cost that we attribute to an additional 151-plus students coming into the district over the course of the last two years. We have calculated that there are, the district incur's additional special ed costs that total $486,000. So we know that a certain number of these, and we haven't looked at, you know, we're not calculating or looking at the actual 100, well, there's only actually 191 current students, but 60 projected students. But we're calculating based on averages, essentially, if we've got 151 additional students, we know that a certain percentage, I think it's about 20-something percent or so of our student population.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent is, is, receives special education services. And then we've calculated the average cost for the students that are identified as needing special education services. We've calculated the average cost and when you multiply those two numbers together, you arrive at the $486,000.
So our average for the district is 15% of our student body has IUPs or special needs students. I think we spent about 28% of our budget on those 15% students, close to a third. Within the group of new students, we, it's probably more like 20% as opposed to 15% of the enrollment growth is in special education. And within that, I know that there are two or three outside placements as well that we have, we've had to make among, among the students of the enrollment growth category.
I just wanted to play our five because I know that.
So, you know, to give you an example of that, we were projected to go down in the outside placements as a result of bringing back the high road class and the autism class at Wolf Pit. Were about equal. We haven't gone up, but we're about the same. And the reason we're about the same is we have the new students, several of whom have had to have outside placements.
Yeah, because I know that we earlier, you know, approved and received money for special ed, so I was just trying to figure out if this is something.
This has nothing to do with the special ed development fund.
That's what I was trying to find out.
That money is categorically assigned to certain purposes as approved by both the board and the city.
That's what I wanted to find out.
And this is, this is pure, this is pure growth.
Right. And the average cost that we're using is, you know, this doesn't incorporate a bunch of additional outplacement, so if there are outplacements, the actual number would be higher than this. This is a calculation based on sort of the average overall cost of a special education student.
If 7.5% of this estimated 151 students are identified, where does the balance of that money go?
I'm sorry, if.
If you, the $486,762, this is projected.
Right. This is, this is a calculation of what we believe are the additional costs that we will incur in sped-related expenses as a result of an increase of 151 students in the district.
Right, correct. So if you do not incur that amount and incur half that amount, where does the balance of that money go?
Well, we're going to incur what we incur, obviously, you know, depends on, some students may be much higher cost or some may be lower. I think the, you know, as the superintendent indicated, this doesn't take into account even one outplacement. So if you have one outplacement in there.
You may incur more.
You know, I think, I mean, bottom line is the budget is part of the overall district budget. It goes into the special ed budget is what we're saying. So it remain, if we, if for some reason we have great experience and these 151 students don't generate $486,000 of additional sped costs, then that money remains in the.
We could transfer it to another use. That's what I'm trying to find out.
They bring transfers to us and we approve use for another purpose.
And it can go anywhere through the transfer.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Similarly, if it costs more, we'll have to bring you transfers from something.
Right, to fund this.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
So I'm going to now turn my attention to health insurance, which is, as we know, this is a really a crisis that is going to, as the superintendent said, we are going to need to work with the city to find a solution to this issue because it is a, you know, what is really a very, very large increase, larger increase than we think we are, right now are reasonably going to receive. And so we think we are going to, we know we're going to have to find some new and creative ways to try to address this problem. But I want to first start by making sure everyone has a base of understanding of why we're where we are and why the numbers are as they are. And so my, the next two slides really walk through the health insurance calculation. And so we start with the first line, projected claim cost per our consultant. And so we used our consultant's projections for 16, 17, and he projected claims for the current year when we were putting the budget together last year at just over $29 million. When we asked him for his number this year, for next year, the 17, 18 year, the number he has given us is $33,687,000. So he is projecting an increase of almost 16% year over year in total claim costs for the district. And that's being, so that's $3.6 million in growth in claims. And that is really being driven by utilization that has increased. So we have more employees who are utilizing and requiring health services. We have increases in underlying health trend. You may remember in the past, we had some, we had three years of very favorable experience where our costs were way, way below national averages, way, way below what our health insurance consultant had been projecting health trend was going to be. And in fact, that's the reason why we ended up in the past with this large excess balance in the insurance fund was because our consultant was using trend that was running at about 10% per year at the time, and our actual experience was flat. We even had one year where it went down. So we were really, we had a three-year period where our claim costs were essentially flat, which was quite unusual, and trend at the time was running at about 10%. Well, since then, trend, national trend has actually kicked up a bit. National trend is running, I believe, at about 12%. But based on what's happened with our claims experience over the last 18 months, our health insurance consultant is recommending that we move this number up by 16% based on the fact that claims are running, they ran high last, you may remember, they started running high a year ago December. December of 2015 was when claims really started to tick up. And they ran high really for the next seven months. They started to moderate, but then the trend is, you know, at this point is a concern. So the bottom line is, our health insurance consultant has said, these underlying claim costs are going up for us year over year, budget to budget by 16%. So that's the, you know, the biggest driver here. The other costs on this first page are not really major drivers. I should mention the next line item, and I put it in here for a reason because I want the board to understand, there is some risk in, the number we're presenting is not as high as our consultant is actually recommending to us. Because our consultant in the past has always recommended a margin. A margin for health insurance purposes is really a contingency for adverse claims experience because we're self-insured. Some years we can, as we had, some years you can have claims that run very favorably, other years you can have claims that run unfavorably and run high. And so the consultant had recommended, he always recommends a margin. In the past, we always had a large balance in the insurance fund for the last, say, three, four years, such that pretty much everyone who looked at it said, well, there's really no need to budget for an extra margin because you have a large enough insurance reserve that, that it's really excessive to budget for the margin. At this point, our insurance reserve is projected to be down at the end of this year, down to about $3 million. And so based on that number, the consultant recommended again budgeting the margin. And if, you know, if, if we weren't in a situation where the budget where, is where it is, undoubtedly, we would prefer to recommend budgeting for the margin. But we felt simply given the fact of the, you know, everything else that's in the budget, given the increase that we're looking at in health insurance, we don't think we can recommend budgeting the margin. But I didn't want to sort of put that on the table because it does present some risk to the board that if we have particularly unfavorable claims experience again next year, you know, that issue of, you know, how come the margin wasn't budgeted, needs to be understood. And so I wanted to kind of put that on the table so that everyone's aware of it. The other costs on this page are not major drivers. We have fixed retention costs going up at about 5%. That's the administrative expense of health insurance. So that's the fee that Anthem receives for providing, for processing all of our claims for us, for providing us with a network of doctors who are in the Anthem network. It includes discounts that the Anthem then negotiates with their providers to the prices, to the price that they pay for any given service. So that's the cost of administering claims is the retention cost. Also in there is the cost of stop-loss insurance for our, for the plan because we're self-insured up to the first $250,000. If a claim exceeds $250,000, if you have a preemie birth, those can be a million dollars or more. So we have a stop-loss insurance that kicks in at $250,000. The next item is an item that we picked up that had been left off apparently for several years, but we determined that we do have a small insured plan for Medicare retirees, for custodians, and some other non-certified staff as part of their collective bargaining agreements. We have a Medicare supplement plan and a prescription wraparound plan for some of our bargaining groups. That has a, that is an insured plan and that has a cost of $647,000, so we put that in there. Life insurance, we're experiencing some savings in life insurance from rebidding life insurance, and then the curriculum benefits is just there because we're required to segregate our curriculum, the health costs related to the adult education program. So bottom line, we're, our gross costs, claim costs, go up about $5.1 million based on our health insurance consultant's projections. And the second page here is really the offsets and then takes you down to a bottom line. And it's the offsets that make what is, would otherwise be a pretty difficult situation with a 16% budget increase turn into a 37% budget increase, which I think everyone obviously is choking on at this point. And so the first two items that you see here are the, and I'm not sure, I don't want to, anyone know where the pointer is on this thing? Is it the red button?
Oh.
Yeah, okay, so.
Fire alarm, this is going off.
Plan drawdown from insurance fund balance, $2,271, and the sped development fund VOE contribution, $1.3 million. Those are really one-time draws from our insurance fund. We were in the enviable position a year ago of having an insurance fund that actually had more money in it than we needed. So there was a reduction that was made, and you'll remember discussion with the city over a $1.5 million reduction to our health insurance line. And we agreed, and the board agreed, that yes, we could, we could make that reduction. And also you'll remember the discussion about how we were going to fund the three-year sped development fund. The city graciously did agree to fund the first year of that plan, and we said we will fund the second year of that plan by drawing it down from our insurance fund. The way we mechanically do that is to actually reduce our appropriation into the insurance fund through this budget line. And so those really become one-time reductions to our budget that need to be restored in the following year. So the budget impact between them over two years is, you know, over $3.5 million. And so that's really a one-time adjustment. It's not, it's not a result of claim cost, but it is something that affects the amount that we need to request in next year's budget. The other items here are pretty much not major drivers. Here are the, the other items that get taken off of our gross cost is employee premium cost share, so employees contribute currently about $3.5 million. We're projecting that's going to go up to $3.6 million next year. We get some grant reimbursement for some employees who are paid for from grants. In some cases, we do charge the cost of health benefits to those grants. We get some reimbursement in here from food service employees because the food service, or the food service fund, because some food service employees have benefits. We get retiree reimbursements for retirees who have elected to stay on our health plan and are required under their collective bargaining agreement to make pay-ins, pay for a portion, or in some cases, all of the cost of benefits. That's reflected here. Cobra reimbursements, if somebody leaves our employment but likes to stay on benefits as they're allowed to under federal law, then we would reflect that reimbursement here. We also get some TRB reimbursement, the Teachers Retirement Board reimburses us for certain employees who are retired but under the age of 65, who remain on our medical plan for a period of time. And that brings us down essentially to the bottom line, which is current year, we had the gross cost on the previous page, minus 8.6 million. And what's in our budget for the current year is this $23,231. And likewise, in the recommended column, we have what the recommended gross cost from the previous page minus, in this case, 5.1 million gets us to the 31.8 million, which translates to that $8.6 million increase. So I just want everyone to be, sort of understand the number because I know there's, you know, undoubtedly, as we go forward, there's going to be, you know, further discussion about health insurance, and so I think it's important for people to kind of be, have, have an understanding of how the numbers work and why they are as they are. I don't know if there's questions on the numbers. I have one more slide on health insurance.
I'll let you finish health insurance.
Okay, we can always go back if you want. So I think the superintendent has mentioned these in his opening comments, but the superintendent has met with the mayor and used the word budget crisis here because we really do view this as a, you know, something that is potentially, you know, really a crisis that the district and the city need to work together to resolve and to solve. And the superintendent has identified three potential strategies and has called for the creation of a study team to get to work between the Board of Education and the city to look at these options and potentially any others that could be identified as ways to, you know, address this issue. So the first is to potentially combine the district and the city for purposes of self-insuring together. The city is self-insured, the board is self-insured for medical insurance. But we have two separate platforms, two separate providers, two separate sets of retention costs. And certainly there would be some savings, particularly administrative savings, by combining our plans under a single provider. our plans under a single provider. Now, you know, if we had the same benefits that we currently have and the city has the same benefits that they currently have, then most of the savings that you're going to be able to achieve from such a consolidation is going to be on that fixed retention cost portion of the budget. So it's not the big portion of the budget, but nevertheless, it is the portion of the budget that, that is, you know, the, if you will, provides the least value to anyone here because it's really the profit and overhead and operating margin for the insurance companies to administer the plan. So we think that there is savings that could be achieved by consolidating those plans and there's savings that could be achieved in those stop-loss premiums by consolidating those plans. So that's one option certainly that could be examined. The second item, or the second option we've identified is having the city assume the health insurance cost for all employees. And the superintendent's familiar with the New Haven model where in fact they did this not too long ago. And this would essentially have the district turn over to the city, the administration and essentially turn over our health benefits to the city. We would turn over our insurance fund balance to the city at that time and look for the city to cover those costs. The city has a significant reserve fund itself in the general fund, as you're aware, and the city also has insurance reserves in the insurance, city insurance fund. And so we think there's some economies of scale to be achieved as well as the fact that really by combining those programs, the total amount of reserve that the city would need, we think, could be consolidated and potentially reduced by, by doing that. So we think that's an option that has, you know, certainly needs to be studied and looked at. And then the third option that we've identified here is to have either the district separately or jointly with the city, consider the state's health insurance plan, the 2.0 health insurance plan. And this is a same plan that the state employees are in, is now available to municipalities and school districts and other governmental entities in Connecticut. And the 2.0 version, the 1.0 version provided that the state would, the municipalities and school districts could enter the plan, the state would calculate an individual premium for you as an employer. And that plan did not really generate much enthusiasm in the municipal or Board of Education sector. And there were very few organizations that took advantage of it. About a year ago, the state rolled out what they're calling the 2.0 partnership plan. And with this plan, they have developed a statewide premium that applies across the state for all entities that enter the plan. And so those are published numbers. Effectively, for us, it becomes an insured plan. Underneath it, it's actually a self insured plan for the state, but it's for the participating municipalities or school districts. You're given a premium per month, you know, for individual coverage, employee plus one or full family coverage. So it moves us to a place where, one, there's certainty because you have budget certainty because you know what your premium is going to be for the, you know, upcoming 12-month period. This plan has generated some significant interest and movement among both municipalities and school districts. And what we're seeing is primarily there's a number of communities and school districts, small communities and school districts in eastern Connecticut. And then there's a number of the larger municipalities and school districts in Fairfield County that have opted to go in. And we have looked at the numbers and we believe that there are, we're still evaluating those numbers with our consultants, so I certainly don't want to quote any numbers here tonight, but we do believe that there are, do appear to be some significant savings potentially by considering such a move. And a number of municipalities, Fairfield Board of Education moved on July 2016, Bethel Board of Ed moved on July 2016, Brookfield on 2016, Trumbull, Town of Trumbull on 2016, and also the Trumbull Board of Education in September of 2016. So there are a number of Greenwich, there's a partial move in Greenwich. I think they're, they're looking at moving other groups. Obviously, we do have issues with respect to collective bargaining. Our collective bargaining agreements contain, you know, language concerning benefits and obviously we have to examine what that language provides for. Doesn't, my recollection is it doesn't specify generally a named vendor, but I believe that, you know, we are required to provide benefits that are substantially equal or some such language. So, you know, there will be a, you know, quite an effort undertaken or required under any scenario, but this does look to be an option that does need to be examined closely and carefully. And, you know, we're not prepared to make any recommendations obviously tonight. We want the study committee to do its work and come back with recommendations to the board and to the city. But we recognize that this is an area that does require us to work closely with the city to do everything we can, everything within our power to try to bring this budget number of benefits down to a level that is sustainable. So I guess, Tom, questions?
I just wanted to say, I was at CES this afternoon and I told everyone there, which is kind of where everybody had their budget when they were doing the healthcare thoughts. I won't go into everything, but I'm just going to throw out a couple of examples of things that find of interest. So Trumbull, their budget's going up 3.5%. As you said, they've joined 2.0. Their quote, their insurance costs are way down. The town of Greenwich, their teacher, their insurance was handled by the city side, but they have gone to 2.0. And they think, she didn't have the hard number in front of her, but she thought their savings over three years were almost close to $30 million is what she thought it was. And then the town of Fairfield, their budget's only up 3%, but their cost of insurance would have gone up $4.5 million if they hadn't joined 2.0. And their health insurance costs, their budget would have gone up 17% if they had not joined 2.0.
Okay, so that's sort of in line with, you know, what our base number would have been?
Well, we're, you know, there's some good, you know, some of our peers have definitely done some stuff that, you know, whatever, we definitely want to take a look at because I think there's some actual cost savings.
So that's, might, like stole my thunder on Fairfield because they just posted that story today, but right there on the 2.0, they went up 10%. But more interesting than that is if you look at their actual 15 to 16, and then you look at their budget, 16 to 17, they actually went down in their budget by $3 million, 26 to 23. So they had the same outlook that we had when we made the same decision last year is that we were favorable and this was money that we could use. So I don't think that was an error at all. It looks, it looks lockstep with what they did. Their, their insurance just happens to only be going up 9%. And as you say, they're on the 2.0. There, there's not a lot of news stories out there, but I see Durham, Connecticut is up 14% on healthcare. So this looks like something macro going on here.
One thing, Tom, you mentioned some interesting numbers to us on the finance committee meeting, which maybe you should share with the whole board tonight. When you talked about the number of claims of $75,000 or higher, I think more than, or roughly doubled.
Right. We, you know, we've been working with our health insurance consultant to try to get, you know, a better understanding of what's really driving our claim costs and why have we, you know, experienced the kind of increase that we've been experiencing over the last 18 months or so. Part of it at least is the number of high-cost claims has gone up. We had been averaging about 15 claims that were $75,000 or more. And that number last year went up to about 30 claims and is trending again well above the 15 claim number that we had historically been seeing. So, you know, exactly what's underlying that, I don't think we still really know. Part of it may just simply be, you know, with an aging workforce, as people get older, more serious things happen to people. Or, you know, it could be just, you know, some bad luck. Maybe we'll revert back to the 15, you know, number at some point in the future, but that is definitely part of what's been driving that spiking claim cost.
So on page two of my budget message, which is in your budget binder, I've discussed these three options in a little greater detail. And these were discussed with Mayor Rilling and Leisha.
King.
Thank you. Leisha King. And, you know, they kind of represented our best thinking in terms of what the alternatives were that should be examined. We are in the process of appointing a joint study committee. And that will consist of the chiefs, the chief financial officers and talent officers of both city and our school district, as well as Ms. King for the city and Dr. Costanzo for the, for the school district. We realize that most of this work will be done by our respective insurance consultants. We should have one insurance consultant, not two, but we're going to employ both of them in this undertaking and hope to find a solution that would neutralize to the greatest extent possible the 8.7% cost increase. This will be an adjustment for everyone involved, every one of our employees. However, you can see the impact of this. It's 86 teaching positions. And so it's not sustainable. Our current system is not sustainable in its current form. So we will have to change form to preserve substance and to preserve the school district and enable us to keep moving and improving, for which the rest of the budget is critical. So that's, that's where we are. I hope to be able to have some recommendation for you as a result of the committee's work in a few weeks. And at this point, we're approaching this very optimistically. It will require the close collaboration of both the city and the school district. And I am very encouraged that Mayor Rilling has expressed the desire to work with us on this.
Pardon?
Thanks. I'll be quick. I think these are three good, possibly great viable options that we need. But I think as far as insurance costs, I think it's at the national level. I think it's been trending for quite some time on the cost of insurance, and I think it's only going to keep going up. So a lot that we're looking at this and that we're joining city on this. But as far as the joint study committee, do we know how long that might take too? And I know we have representation from the board, but...
We're thinking three to four weeks.
Okay, we'll be having a representative from insurance and fully looking at it. Our board, Frank, will be there as well. You just mentioned some.
Frank, Sherry, Sherry, Tom, and our insurance advisor. We make up our team.
And I know you were talking about some of the costs. So we don't really know though exactly. I mean, we're thinking it's trending, but is it like surgical costs? Is it, you know, I mean, it seems as if it's just ongoing with insurance claims and the cost behind it.
Yeah, it's, it's really a variety of things. One is, you know, prescription drugs and there are a lot of new specialty drugs that are out there. You know, the hep C drug has gotten a lot of attention. And so, you know, some of it, there's some new, you know, therapies for cancer, biologic therapies and targeted therapies. And so, you know, some of it is, you know, those sorts of expenses. But, you know, I think they're, they're finding it really runs the gamut. You know, we get various reports and analyze various reports through our consultant looking at, looking for trends. You know, generally it's going to be, you know, a variety of things. It's going to be cancers, it's going to be diabetes and other kinds of chronic diseases that sort of stem from diabetes. It's a lot of the, the things that you read about and hear about nationally that, you know, that we are impacted by as well.
Yeah, just tonight we had a policy committee meeting and we talked about all of this and how important that is for children, but also for adults. So hoping at some point we'll have some kind of meaning for adults and keeping adults healthy, I mean, healthy and happy, of course. But just, you know, it's so difficult with insurance because it does trend because rates can go up.
We do need to do more with wellness.
With our staff.
On the other hand, you know, our, if you look at the years of teaching experience on the state, on the state website, our teachers have more experience than the state average. So we have, we have an older aging workforce and that, you know, this comes with it. But I think the other factor is that there is a cycle and a timeframe to this, which we can't see, all right? And so we've had several good years and now we have a horrendous year, all right? Somewhere, if you were to plot this out, you would, you would find an average increase, right? That was the result of dealing with a spike like this, but also all the good years. We don't know what that is because we're always budgeting year to year. We're always looking at the next year. That was Mr. Barron's logic a year ago when he urged us to use our, our reserve because we were having such good claims results. So it's just that we can't see it because we're not budgeting for five or 10 years at, at a time. And this is one of the things I think that both, you know, the mayor and I are concerned about. The amount of discussion and angst that goes over, that goes into how large the reserve should be is really something that I think has outlived its usefulness for us. If you look at the second option, you know, the New Haven plan, it's not necessary for us to have a reserve. It's not necessary for the city to have an insurance reserve because they have their big rainy day reserve that far exceeds anything that you would need for this purpose. And then similarly with the state plan, you're talking about a fully insured plan for us, or at least from our standpoint, even though the state is self-insuring it and there's no reserve required there either. And so again, I think we've just reached the point of needing a new and better solution to the current circumstances. It's not to say that what was being done in the past was, was not good. In fact, the Board of Education historically has made more progress than other governmental entities in areas like the high deductible health plans, which most of our employees are on.
But it is something unique just to normal because as you see other surrounding districts as well.
This isn't, this problem was in 2011, right?
I think that's what you count.
Well, it was exacerbated by lack of management back then.
Sure. Pardon? I have two questions. Couple of the options call for combining insurance funds. I'm curious if the city charter allows for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there would be any charter issue with that. If, you know, if the city were to just assume all of the, you know, insurance obligations, then it would, it would all fall under them. In fact, the insurance fund that we have is in fact a consolidated insurance fund now with the city. It's one fund. There are different components to it, and one component is the Board of Education Medical Plan. But if you actually look at the financial statements for the city, it all gets rolled together for financial statement purposes. So we keep track of it in separate buckets. So we know here's how much of the entire insurance fund is attributable to the Board of Education. But actually from a financial reporting standpoint, it's actually already consolidated.
I think it's comparable to retiring the pension plans. Yeah. Because other than the certificated employees, all of our non-certified employees are on the city's pension.
Right. And that's actually sort of the model that the superintendent is pitching on option two is exactly the model that we have with the non-certified employee pension plan.
Second pardon? So it sounds to me like we're not staying with the current health, health insurance coverage, which then the question is, are we voting next week for everything but the health insurance?
No, I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're voting for the full more increase that we would expect if we were not able to do any of these three options. And would you, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
And if one of those options becomes fee- And if one of those options becomes feasible in the next couple of months, can we find a way to, you know, chop that cost down and we can do that? We haven't, ultimately, we have until June 30th to get our final budget. You know, we're required to submit a budget by next Tuesday by charter, but the final decision is due until June 30th. So I think next week we're voting for the full board as if none of those things were able to do.
Okay.
Now, I guess... No, we will work with the city as we go along. And as you know, their process will stretch out over the next several months.
Yeah.
So, you know, we will have the opportunity to adjust this. It's going to be adjusted with them, right? And so, you know, we have to have some optimism that particularly two or three, I think one will save some money, but not at this level of magnitude, that two or three can be shown through the study to be very viable alternatives. And then, you know, we will, we will adjust. And as you know, this is not final until the board investment taxation actually sets the amount of each, in each budget. So the good news is we have time to deal with this. This is, you know, this early charter deadline is one of the veins of our existence, but in this case, it proves to be a very good thing because it will give us, give us the time to seek an alternative.
Okay. Quick follow-up. I mean, I can already envision the city council members' heads exploding when they see 10.21. So when they come back and say, cut the number, where are we cutting from?
I think we will adapt to the total increase they give us and hope that the health insurance adjustment will meet that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I will go on. We're almost done.
I think, I think, you know, we are the ones in a high-risk situation, right? We have, we have to, let's, let's say they give us a number that represents five percent of our budget or four percent of our budget. You know, and we're successful in neutralizing the health insurance increase, okay? Well, then maybe we have a percent cut or half a percent cut or some of that. That's what I'm hoping the scenario will be that unfolds.
But I think Artie does bring up a question that if you look at this increase, how, what is this insurance? If the insurance issue cannot be resolved at some point, you know, one could argue that our increase will go exclusively to that.
Yes.
And then you've got these contractual increases and these program increases, which are the other half. Those, those, you can't eliminate the contractual increases, so that means you got to take that out of somewhere.
Magnet programs.
That goes.
All the improvements.
But then you still have...
Yeah, everything goes.
But you still have the contractual crisis you have to honor.
And we cannot, and we cannot let that happen.
And that would be tough, yeah.
We cannot let it happen. It's not, it's not even, it's not an option.
Yeah, here you go. Okay. Okay, I'll finish up. So next slide is enrollment. And the purpose really of putting this in here is to drive home the point that over the last eight years, our enrollment has grown by almost 600 students. And that's a lot of additional kids. And I don't think there's ever been a point where the district has even specifically asked for any funding or requested any funding. And I'm quite certain the city has never provided any additional funding to, you know, accommodate the cost associated with educating additional 600 kids. That's, that's almost two schools worth of kids that we're talking about, elementary schools. So what you see particularly at the high school and the middle school level, that's where now the bubble is going through the system. So we've got the growth at the high schools. I think you're, you know, aware of the fact that the, particularly at Bryan McMahon, they picked up a over 100, I think it was almost 125 or approximately 125 additional students in the current school year. And so the projection for next year doesn't incorporate the increase that we, that we had, that we already had at Bryan McMahon, as well as the additional increases that are projected by our consultant. We did ask our consultant, who we've used, who we used last year as part of the facilities study, Melona McBroom, to refresh their numbers after we had the actual enrollments for October 2016. We provided that information back to Melona McBroom, asked them to refresh their numbers for us so that we've got, we think, you know, a good set of professional demographer eyes looking at these numbers and adjusting them. You know, last year, I think what happened at Bryan McMahon was somewhat unexpected. So there are, you know, so things that can happen that are outside of the, you know, the realm of what a demographer can project. If you've got a whole bunch of additional students come in from, you know, the, what's the unaccompanied minors and so forth, those are things that are very difficult to project. But in any event, I think the point we're trying to make here is, is there is an ongoing increase in enrollment and that justifies the enrollment appropriation that we talked about earlier. The all-funds budget, again, this is new and so it provides you Fund 11, which is our general fund operating budget, which we've been talking about here before, includes these programs, which would be essentially programs that are self-funded from fees and other charges. The grants line of about $19 million and food services at $4.3 million. The grants that we've included here are the grants that we deem to be ongoing continuing grants. Now, there is, as I think I earlier indicated, still a fair amount of uncertainty. We've assumed flat funding on these grants generally, and that may or may not turn out to be a good assumption for us. And so, you know, that's something that we won't really know until we get into, you know, after the state legislature is working on their budget. After they've adopted a budget, then we would have a clearer understanding as to where those grants are going to go. But we've not included in here some of the one-time grants that we may get, you know, a, I can use, unexpected grant or maybe foundation money that may come in or other things that we haven't built into the budget as an ongoing grant that we think is sort of a permanent fixture. So the actual grants that come in during the year hopefully will be larger than the 19 million. But again, based on what we believe is, you know, sort of current flat year funding, we're at 19 million for next year. The next slide is a graphical representation and some breakout of the all-funds budget. So the two large slices, I realize you probably can't read what's in there, but the red one is the school-based budgets and...
It's in the, by the way, it's in the book on page 11.
Right, it's in the book on page 11, and I think you can read it on that copy. The blue slice is central services, the red slice is the school-based budget. So together, that makes up the local general fund budget. And then the other smaller slices are the various other programs and grants that you can see here. I think we've got some additional slides, I believe, that break that down further, so I'll go on to those. So this is the slide of the grants budget. So these are the major grants that you can, that we, that comprise the grants budget. The priority school district grant at about 3.9 million and the school readiness grant at 5.4 million are the two largest. The school readiness grant is the entire school readiness funding. We are the fiscal agent for the, all of the school readiness grants so that the, that would include money that goes to outside preschool programs like Carousel and others that are not under district operation. But the grant does come to us and then is allocated onto them. This also includes Title I at 2.4 million, 13 percent, which is a federal grant. And I think you're familiar with that program and that's used to provide supplemental services for students based on free and reduced fund shell eligibility. The IDEA grant, which is a special education grant of 2.1 million dollars. The Alliance District Grant of 1.2 million, that's the one that, based on the $250,000 reduction, we think that's going to probably come down by $250,000 for next year is probably the best estimate. All other grants, 2.2 million, and your book contains an itemization on page 16 of the other grants in here. So this includes E-rate grants, Title II rate grant, extended school year grant, and the other grants that are listed on page 16. And then finally, just a breakout of the programs. These are, you know, much smaller numbers we're talking about here. The total of the programs that we're looking at total about 1.0, a little less than 1.5 million. So after the bell, and pre-K programs, Kids Inc. and summer school are the major items in the various programs. So I think that concludes my presentation on the budget. Obviously, there's a lot of documentation and backup in here and I'm happy to answer further questions. And if there's questions that we can't answer, we're obviously on the spot. We're happy to do whatever research we need to do to get those answers to you before you meet again on the budget next Tuesday.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
I just want to say that once you send the slides, and I just want an opportunity to really review this, you know, line by line, items on this. So I might have further questions, I just wanted to have the right to ask those questions because we're just giving folks, you know, so I...
Absolutely.
Yeah, feel free to just email questions between now and the 17th.
Yeah, we urge board members to do that.
And any question that we get, we'll answer it and send it to the entire board.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, obviously, this is a big nut. There's no getting around that. But I would point out that even though, you know, as Artie pointed out, people are going to choke the ice with 10 percent. I think if you, it's interesting that if you look at sort of the base increase outside of the insurance, you know, it's about one and a half percent. That's the base increase of costs for running the school system. The, the insurance is a massive chunk of money because, you know, it's blown up this year as opposed to staying stable. If it was stable like it was the last few years, we wouldn't be seeing a big increase like that. And so the rest of the increase is our attempt to basically implement the strategic operating plan to make the school system better. So I think, you know, the board members should keep that in mind that, you know, this is not a out-of-control budget, for instance. I mean, this budget does not, for instance, reflect a continued explosion and uncontrolled special ed costs, the kinds of things that were driving increases in the past. So I think a fundamental level base budget is under pretty good control. And we have two challenges. One is, how do we deal with this insurance crisis, which as various people have noted is a national phenomenon, it's not limited here? And is there a way for us to fund improvements in schools so we're not simply treading water, but we're making them better? That's, you know, the discussion that we have to have with the city over the next few months.
All right, so that will close the presentation on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Stan, and Max, Chris, and Alja.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
We've crunched all the numbers. Now we'll proceed to section four of the agenda, which is public comments. Do we have a sign-in?
Yes. Over there. This bike?
Is there any?
There's one. Oh. Is the bike? Do you want to ask for a speaker?
Yeah, I think you can ask if any.
Are any speakers? Please put us your hand. If we have them, would you like to come up?
Yeah, Mr. Bob's line up.
Yeah. Ready to like board? I came here tonight because I know insurance was going to come up. And I want to say to you all, through my experience for 30 years negotiating with contracts, I know more with the contract than the one. The city and board, when I was negotiating, we were there one time and then they broke off. And if you just look at, in the old half, that they went to arbitration, arbitrator ruled, and all the unions and all of them got it, that the Board of Education is separate from the city. And right there in that 216 contract that lightens at 59, they ruled that that is illegal. It's right there in black and white, but what they've been hiding. Another thing what I found out, and you know, when we stand up for what's right, normally they come at you hard. I was able to, we had a suit, we got a suit in this board in Stanford. They got the cooperation, the board, Lord Henry, so he putting up all kinds of fight to knock us out. But we are holding on. Now, we are able to, we retired, and this is what I'm going to say to you all, it ain't nothing to think, I'm next to on the keyboard. Most of old people now getting old, that's like one of, I retired 13, 15, 20 years. Eight, I looked at my list, most of them up there around 70, they going to cost you, they want to go in that ground, you ain't going, you going to come back down. Another thing what I looked at, and I was able to look at, and I was able, they didn't want me to get my hand, but I was getting, getting my hand on all of the document. You all, you all, you all caused it. What you did, you put them into a higher, higher bracket. When I was negotiating, we kept them in a lower bracket, we got the same benefit. Another thing what I would like to know, and I'm looking at it now, and I, and we began to get the data, now they don't want to give it to them. Number one, you ain't got the right people looking at the insurance to know what they doing. I went out with the city, I lived with them, and they appreciate me. I said, you got a lot of dead people on this list, lot of dead people. Got them all there. And I asked them why all these dead people, I hope we take them off the other day. When you die, you goes off. Another thing what I looked at, and I, and I'm not ship of code in this thing, and I'm going to stand up for what's right and go to my grave. I looked at, I looked at some of these retirees who retired with me with 30 years. You don't want they paying them, you don't want they paying them money. $865 a month, over $10,000 a year. Where is that money going? And they paying it right to the board. That's why you see them all jumping around, I ask, why is 10,000, that's one person. 10,000, they with the problem, give me just a minute, please, because I want, I want to, I mean, this is, this is, I want to make sure that the board, listen to what I'm saying here. We got a lot of retirees and you cannot change that contract because you got contract. The union don't have nothing to do with it. I took the union to COVID because the union cannot go there because he, once you retire, we don't pay you to do, we can protect ourselves. We got a 80, 70 guy that don't retire, we entitled them because the union can't change that what they say. You got to, we, we have, you understand what I'm trying to say? So what I'm trying to say, before you run out there and say, we going to do this, you got to talk to the, you got to talk to the, to the union, you have to negotiate with the union. Also, you, the union and y'all cannot touch our contract, your benefit. Our benefits say our wives and our screw supposed to get the insurance the rest of their life. That's what they say. So I don't see why, you can't cut the show. Now, you got some new employees coming in, you can do it. But I'm just trying to tell you, don't mess with our insurance because of the doctor us retired. And you going to have a heavy load of older people. And once they, once you don't, because you up there in age, that's why, and once that happen, then your insurance going to come down. Thank you very much.
Joe, are there any other public speakers? And if there are more public speakers, public comments will be included.
Thank you, Artis. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Simmons moves. 80 seconds, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.